First of all, thank you all for being here. I'm impressed that every week you all have a crowd just like this. It's really a testament to the organization that you all have. Thank you SAVIA and the putty banks committee, everybody involved with the boards for putting this together as quickly as possible. My name is Jared Cates. I'm a thirty-three-year-old father and motorcycle technician. I went to a technical school out in Phoenix and learned to work at Harley-Davidson's there. Really just a regular blue-collar worker. I did help form the local NACADOTCHES chapter a couple of years ago, and that's of course to help in the fight for marijuana reform. And that opened a lot of doors for activism on other important issues as well as volunteerism. It even led to me being featured in High Times Magazine last August, which is a pretty big accomplishment, I'd say. And it was my activism and my volunteerism that led to the NACADOTCHES County Democratic Party approaching me to run for office. And I'm very excited to be a progressive voice for the SFA students on campus as well as the community at large. And I was also recently endorsed by Bernie Sanders and his organization, R Revolution, last month. And I'm very excited to have that support and look forward to showing what I can do to earn that support. So, thank you. I'm Robin Dolly.
I'm Robin Dolly. I'm the older of the two candidates. And you can remember me because I'm the one without the beer. And whenever I'm around Christmas time, as I do, as I've done in the past thirty-three years, I turn into Santa Claus. But I'm just warning you, that's what happens. Now, that has nothing to do with being a Republican, but I am a Republican candidate. Actually, I ran for this position eight years ago. We had two other gentlemen running, and I was defeated then. But I did not lose that desire. I knew that I wanted to serve. And I admire Jared for running. I'm a firm believer in you give back to your community, even if it's a small, small portion, a small way. Because what you put into it's what you're going to get out of it. And so, and basically, that's been my premise ever since I got out of SFA and moved here from seventy-two to go to school from Houston. I stayed. When I graduated, got involved with the JC, I was a JC president there. I've been involved in many organizations, the president of several. I was, I've been in the property tax business for roughly twenty, twenty-two years. Tax assessor-collector for NACADOTCHES School District. Currently working at the appraisal district, working on basically defending us against state issues. But, but not many, but, but I do believe that you're going to get out of your community to what you put into it. Our views are probably going to be a little varied, but the thing is that we both have the good of the NACADOTCHES community and the NACADOTCHES County voters in mind. I mean, that is our ultimate goal, regardless of how we want to get there. I think in our hearts, that's what we believe.
So, you know, I'm going to go into the first question here, and, well, maybe not a question, well, it is a question. Can you describe the, well, it don't matter which one, describe the role of a county commissioner? That, you know, because, you know, you have a brand-new audience who's just not been exposed to this, so, either one. Okay.
Basically, the role of the county commissioner is you handle the day-to-day business of the county. In a sense, like being on the board of directors, just as you have board of directors for this organization that handle the day-to-day, so that the rest of you don't have to deal with it, but they are your representatives. This is basically the role of the county commissioner. And it's statewide, it's the same issue, same position, same responsibilities statewide.
And the question I like to ask, and, you know, based off of that is, how would you, if you were elected, how would you aggrandize that role, or would you keep it the same? I'll take that one.
For precinct three, a lot of the day-to-day operations, road maintenance, things like that are actually taken care of by the city because it does fall within the city limit. So, I would like to hope that that would free up a schedule for a county commissioner to focus on economic development ideals and growing our local job market so that students like yourselves and regular working people like me have more opportunities to better themselves and better their lives for their families. That's something that I see that's really lacking. There doesn't seem to be a lot of focus on improving the local job market as well as growing our local economy to support the students, number one, as well as other family folks who work in NACADOTCHES. That's what I would do too, to aggrandize, which is a great word, the role of a county commissioner.
I think economic development is, is large. I mean, it's, we always get deep with, Lutkin's got this, Lutkin's got that, why don't we have it? Well, part of that is that a large portion, I mean, Lutkin doesn't lose ten thousand people in the summertime and at Christmas time. Their population is rather stable. Now, you know, if you're going to make an investment, you know, if you know that a couple of months, two or three, four months out of the year, you're not going to have the income that you normally have, you know, it's hard to plan for that, and a lot of places aren't going to make, a lot of companies are not going to make that investment realizing that, okay, I, you know, certain parts of the year, certain times of the year, we're not going to have that income. Now, with that said, I believe that working with the city commission, working with our regional partners, state, city, county, do what we can to attract, not one entity can do it. It takes a cooperative effort of outreach and retention. Once you get them here, you've got to do what you can to nurture them, make sure they survive. I don't think there's a whole lot worse than seeing a boarded-up business. Because, you know, somebody has put their livelihood into that, put their savings, and they didn't make it. I mean, that's very sad. But anyway, that's basically what I would concentrate on, as well as taking care of all businesses.
Anyway, and how would you, how would you go about protecting those businesses so that they won't be boarded up, shut down, and not have to depend on the boom or bust system with the, you know, college students coming in and leaving? And how do you, how do you go about, how do you go about doing that? What are the steps?
Can you say the question in your opinion?
Okay. So, the question I was asking, because, you know, in accordance to what Robin Dolly was saying, how do we protect businesses in NACADOTCHES County from being shut down? And making sure they don't have to depend on boom and bust system, which reflects, you know, an inconsistent economy? Because, you know, we leave, like you said, we leave during the spring, not the spring, the summer, we leave during the winter, you know? And let's be honest, local businesses, they follow suit. So, how do you protect this from that cyclical system per se?
Ideally, I'd like to create a community that y'all aren't real excited about leaving on Thursday afternoon at 1:00 P.M. I'd like to make it where y'all want to stay, you know, through the summer, that y'all have jobs and there's entertainment, music, local restaurants, you know, things that excite you about NACADOTCHES, that excite me about NACADOTCHES, that make that cycle of boom and bust kind of a little more even, where we have more of you guys staying in town throughout the summer because you do have a local job, or because, you know, there's so much going on with volunteer organizations and whatnot, you can't see yourself leaving. Hopefully, congratulations, we've created a community that you just can't bear the thought of walking away from when you decide to stay, like Robin Dolly did. That's one thing about NACADOTCHES, it has a magnetic power, and if we welcome you all into the community and offer y'all more better jobs, entertainment, and, you know, introduce y'all to the volunteer organizations and community-building organizations, congratulations, y'all aren't going to want to leave. But as far as protecting businesses, I think the key is to not worry about luring outside businesses in in hopes of creating jobs. It's about investing responsibly in our own local businesses. There's a lot of, you know, pay, living wage-paying local job opportunities that could be developed here with some directed research as far as what we produce as a county, what we buy as a county, and what with economic development investment we could produce and ensure that we support local businesses first and foremost. I'm sure everybody's seen the commercials, you know, shop and act first, but not too many folks know where those local businesses are. I think with the concerted effort across the board, like you said, through the county, city, and other governmental entities, we could invest locally and improve the job market here through local job providers so that we don't have to worry about an out-of-town company coming in, coming in and creating a couple hundred jobs, and then moving out a few years later, leaving us with a job vacuum. That's the last thing we want to do. So, I would say responsible investment in local businesses first and foremost would help curb that boom and bust cycle.
My third question before I, you know, I don't know who can write the questions, but I'm going to try to call somebody who has one after this question. Either one of you. And most of the questions, you know, address the both of you, so I'll let, you know, Jared speak first, and then, you know, Robin Dolly, you'll be able to speak after him. If elected, you know, what three issues will you tackle first? I guess like your first one-hundred days, I guess you could say, you know? Did I have a question?
Well, first and foremost, headline is the economic development focus. I would start working with the university to do what's called an import substitution study, and that would be that research that needs to be done to find out what we produce, what we could produce, and what we purchase as a county. That would give us a better idea of how we can invest locally to create jobs for college students, working people like myself. From there, honestly, working to build a community that's more welcoming to the student body, offering more as far as jobs, entertainment, supporting local restaurants and music venues. There's some interesting discussions right now going on at the city level about creating an arts and music incubator, which I think is fantastic. Our arts and music scene in NACADOTCHES is incredible. You just have to look for it because we don't have a lot of venues for people like us to go out and support those artists. Those are the kinds of things that I'm really excited about. I also would look at the situation at our jail. There's a lot of concern there as far as safety and health issues that need to be addressed at the jail. There's talks about potentially having to build a whole new jail. I think we need to change the way we do things. With responsible economic development, raising or building up the local economy, we could better take care of the budget at our sheriff's department and make sure that jail is maintained to the point that we should start looking at instituting the two thousand and seven law, allowing officers the discretion to issue a citation and a misdemeanor marijuana arrest. So, rather than, you know, taking an SFA student or young person to jail on the night of a misdemeanor marijuana possession arrest, they're issued a citation and then, you know, required to come back to court to face the music. That would free up police resources, it would lower the jail population to allow for repairs and make sure that everything is on the up and up there. And I think it would help to start breaking down this wall of distrust because so many people see marijuana possession, especially misdemeanor marijuana possession, as a victimless crime because it is. Yet, so many times, it is, you know, the cause of so much trouble for a young person. And in our county, we have fourteen thousand students here at SFA. You know, I'm not saying everyone, you know, partakes, but it sure makes it easy for local law enforcement to use their power and lock up students for a nonviolent crime, and that's something that needs to stop.
As far as first one-hundred days, I think with any, any new position, any new job that you take on, whatever, first thing I want to do is find out what's working and what's not working. I don't believe you go in and say, "I'm going to change this, I'm going to change this." That's not going to happen. I mean, if you wanted to alienate yourself from everybody you've got to spend the next four years with, that's the way to do it. But, see what works and see what doesn't work. And then, find ways to correct and ease into some of those changes that need to be made. Jared pointed out a lot of different things that, I think, the jail situation. One good thing is that at least this year, they did put money in the budget, line item for jail maintenance repair. That, I think that was a stopgap to keep us from really coming into violation of, to stay in compliance with our jail. I would, I would find out who the local, I would get the local partners together and build a team and a think-tank, if you will. Already know who a lot of those players are, but get them on the same page where we're all looking for the same thing. I think this is where we have kind of a disjointed system out there. We have the CVB doing one thing, we've got the Chamber doing one thing. Yes, they are all trying to bring people in, but I think, and of course, NEDCO, which is the economic development corporation that does go out and seek outside interest, but I think we just need to get them all together and say, "Okay, let's, let's get concerted effort here." We all want the same thing. So, that's, how many is that? But, to go with what Jared mentioned, keeping people here on the weekends. When I came here in seventy-two, most of y'all were quite young then. I would have people, I mean, I would stay a week. I'd be here on the weekends, I didn't have a car, and so, I'd have people come back and say, "What'd you do this weekend?" I'd say, "The woodsie, we had..." You might know what a woodsie is? Well, keg party out in the woods, but that's about the point. But, I'd say, "What'd you do?" "Well, there wasn't anything to do." I'd say, "Well, you know what? If you stayed here on the weekend, and enough people stayed, there'd be something to do. So, why run off and go someplace when you could stay right here and you could find something to do?" I'm not advocating for keg parties. I'm just saying, there are, there would be things to do. And again, if we had more venues, downtown's coming back. We're starting to get some stuff, and, and I think this, the music venues and some of the theater venues, that's great. The more things we can have positive for kids to do, I think everybody benefits. It's a win-win for everybody.
I agree. So, I'm going to try to open it up to the audience. Do you have questions? Go ahead.
I think it's really good that how we heard about the things you're wanting to do, and y'all both gave a list at the beginning of kind of like the offices and things y'all run. But the one thing I really would like to know is, why do you even want to be county commissioner? Like, what drives you to want to be able to do that?
Honestly, I'm an activist. I started standing up for marijuana reform in Clutch one day. You know, you're fighting for this one right, and there's so many other battles that need to be fought, how can you sit on the sidelines? And so, I started fighting for marriage equality, and then, you know, fighting against the systemic racism and the criminal justice system. It just kind of snowballed for me. And in my working for NACADOTCHES at Capital, working with legislators all the time, I mean, nonstop, it became very clear that as an activist, I could only do so much. And with the opportunity presented by some, was presented to me to run for local office, I saw that as a chance to become a cog in the system. So that rather than being an outsider fighting for change, I'm in the machine. I could start making things happen. I know what steps can be taken locally, and I could be the one to start, you know, pushing that boulder up that hill. I feel that it's a more effective position as an activist because that part of me is never going away, no matter what title I might have. So, that's what drove me to, and I understand the question, you know, why would you even want to run for office? Because things can get so nasty, especially higher up the ballot, and that turns off a lot of people, younger people, to politics, and that's why I'm so glad that you all are so plugged in to politics and paying attention because it gives you hope that, you know, I'm, you know, just starting this battle, and there's going to be more following behind me. I'm looking at you, Sam. That's it for me.
Okay, while people say, "Well, please," obviously, there's not a mental competency test for this position. But, I've got a servant's heart. I have always had it. I don't apologize for it. I have always centered my life around helping other people. Don't care who they are, where they're from. That's the way I've been, and that's the way I will be until I die. So, that's why, to me, this is another level of service. And that's one I'm, that's one I'm shooting for.
I just want to say, I'll start off with statements, and then I'll get into the question. But, of course, you guys, you know, are leaders, and, you know, a few are the characteristics of a leader. You don't have to be driven, you don't have to be confident, you know, chainy-dated, you know? And you told us, you know, some things that if you were elected, what you would change. So, you know, I would know, if I voted for you, that, hey, you know, these are, this is where he stands on issues, and this is where he wants to go with it. And I heard you speak, but I didn't really hear anything concrete. So, it's like, if you were elected, do you have anything that you would? Because you said, I'll go over what you said. You said that, um...
Okay, first of all, legally, there are things that, I mean, there's sixty pages of things you can and cannot do as a county commissioner. And first of all, you need to learn what you can and can't do. And that's why you go to Austin, and they have a training to let you know, this is what you can and can't do, because if you do some of them, you can really get your butt in a crack. Because at this point, you're talking about legal, and, you know, and, and you can really get the county in a bad situation. Now, with that said, I honestly think that right off the bat, a lot of things you can't do. I mean, it was, it's great to want to do a lot of things, but really, you're going to find out there's some things you can't do. And there are some things that you can work into as far as, you know, the, what?
The side of my legs?
Yeah. I was going to say, right, ticket for, you know, misdemeanor possession, whatever. But, you can't put something in place that conflicts with the state law, and sometimes you run into problems there. But you've got city law, because ninety, well, I mean, our precinct is within the city. They have first primary jurisdiction. So, there are things you can and can't do.
Well, I'm not trying to go right for you, but I didn't really get an answer to the question. I'm just asking, like, you know, like, so like, if you were elected, what, you know, like, what do you want to see changed, or, you know, like, you specifically, like, what would you be more driven to change, or would you just keep things the same and just see how it goes?
No, I mean, first of all, like I said, I want to evaluate what we have. Because you've got to know where you are before you can get to where you want to go. Does that make sense? Okay. Yes, I do want to see more people coming down. I do want to, I think we should have a diverse economy of business. And yes, I do want to try to attract those businesses. And I agree that we don't need to put all of our eggs in one basket where, like I said, you've got two hundred employees. Business lead will, you know, just took the big hit. But yes, I want to try, I want to try to do what I can, and I will do what I can, to attract new business while making sure that I don't run the mom and pop and folks, individuals that have, you know, put their livelihood on the line, running them out of business. So, I think economic development, first of all, I want to make sure that we are good stewards of the taxpayers' money. I mean, I think that's one of the first things the taxpayers look for. Because I guarantee you, they're going to look, they're going to hold you accountable. I learned that as tax assessor. If something's not right, you can be the first rear end they come in and chew off because you're the front line. You're the one taking their money. So, being good stewards of the money. And I think just general good operations of the county. I think those, those are pretty important things. I mean, it's great to have some lofty goals, but first you've got to take care of fundamentals. I answered your question, but I mean, that's...
I have two questions. I'm just going to keep them, one is for both y'all. What do you feel are the most important issues that the county is dealing with that need to be addressed, and also, what are y'all's long-term goals?
Immediately, one of the things that the county is looking at to alleviate some of this problem that we've got with the backlog from the court is adding a second county court of law. That's an issue that can only be brought up every two years, and I think they're going to push to try to get some sort of decision on that this year. But I'm not a betting man normally, says Lotto, and, but I don't think you're going to see the commissioner's court take that stand. So, that's something else that's going to come back in two years that the commissioner's court's going to be, going to be looking at. Secondly, as we already mentioned, the jail situation. It's an old jail. It's been added on to, it's been remodeled here and there, but it is inadequate. We haven't reached max population out there yet, but like I also mentioned, at least for repairs, upgrades, to keep us legal, because you don't want to get out of, you know, don't want to get out of that situation. But I think those two right there are probably the two most immediate. Of course, roads are always a problem, but I think we've only got maybe a half a mile unpaved road in our precinct, and so, we're pretty lucky there. You know, we don't have to get phone calls on that every night. But, but I think that's, county has no problems that all the money in the world couldn't solve.
Jared? Another question, one more time.
What do you feel is the most important issue that needs to be tackled by the county, and then, what are your long-term goals?
Honestly, for me, I keep going back to the economic development. It's the most important issue that our county leadership, our city leadership have to address because so many other problems come from struggling local economy, trying to defend themselves when they can, you have poor education, low home resale. It is all tied into making sure our local economy is functioning for all of us. And I think that is the most immediate concern. And my long-term goal, I've said, you know, since day one, is, you know, not at the end of the four-year term, but ten years, fifteen years down the line, to see the results of my efforts as far as resilient local economic development principles, creating jobs, and creating an atmosphere that makes you guys want to stay in town so that in ten or twelve years, we have a community full of very well-educated, politically active, community-minded people working to better this community for the next generation. And I think that would be a huge accomplishment.
Yeah?
Well, this question's for both of you. What do you plan to do about the education in NACADOTCHES? And also, would you be willing to, in your budget plan, add more funding for educational systems?
I think, you know, education is one of those things that the Texas State Constitution that we have pledged to maintain and ensure that every child receives a good education. I don't think that every child receives equal education, and I think there's a lot of things that are working against us in that regard. Honestly, Stephen Wright is the expert on education. Y'all heard him a couple of weeks ago. One thing that I definitely don't support, just like Stephen, is the school... Uh, one thing that I definitely don't support, just like Stephen, is the, the school voucher system. That takes money away from schools that need it and makes the load more on another school that may be producing better numbers. We need to ensure that every kid in every school receives the same high-caliber education, regardless of the community that they live in. And with that, I don't know if y'all are familiar with some of the, the schools in our local ISB, but schools like Carpenter need immediate replacement. And honestly, you know, again, you know, I hate to be, uh, be on the same record, but economic development. If we had a functioning local economy, we wouldn't have to try to pass school bonds to make sure our kids didn't walk through, you know, three or four-inch puddles to go use the bathroom or get to the cafeteria. We wouldn't be educating students in a school that was built in the sixties as a segregated, blacks-only school that's been recommended for immediate replacement since nineteen ninety-nine. But because of a lack of focus on that issue, so much in our community has suffered, especially education.
And I'm gonna let you speak, Kelly. So, in conjunction with what you just said, build the local economy, you know, it wouldn't be an issue to pay the abhorrent tax that is required to, you know, provide the bonds for our schools to be repaired. I know Carpenter has been on the, on the, on the ballot for a very long time, numerous times. This, this, this past year, or last year, it was on the, it was on the bond again, and it didn't pass. People are financially not confident to afford another bond that they feel is not gonna be carried out the way it's supposed to be. And al- also, um, I'm gonna let you go ahead.
No, no, I thought, I.
How do you get the trust back? Uh, I mean, I, I understand you're one entity of the local government. You're, you're just one entity, but, but you, you definitely have a big impact. How do you regain the people's trust and make them say yes for the rebuilding of Carpenter? So, that's, that's, that's pretty much my question. How do you get the confidence back? What, what do you do? What are, what are the steps you take? Be big or small?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'd say, uh, the trust issue is where it all went, arrived many, many years ago. When they tried to load up the bond and with things that we really didn't need. You know, I think if they say, this is what we need, this is all we're gonna spend money on, this is it. I think that's the only way you would get the trust back. But it hasn't been approached in exactly that fashion. And once you lose public trust, folks, it takes a long, long time to get it back. And that's, I think that's the reason we have not had a bond issue passed. Is because a lot of these folks got burned the first two or three times that they tried to run a bond issue past them. And it was loaded, in my opinion, with a lot of junk. And so, people remember, believe me, they remember. Now, uh.
What, what, oh.
Uh, unfortunately, it's a state issue. Uh, local funding from school, of course, schools is tied back to the local property base. And which is where the appraisal district comes in, since everyone's placed in the bag. If you had a steady housing market with a positive upswing, then that puts you in a better light. And, and then you're gonna get more state money. And you'll get more local participation. So that's, that's basically how that's.
You're right.
So I'm sure both of you know that basically people folks in Nacogdoches are retired, um, so retiree towns. And so with that, they are building, well, according to what we just learned, they're basically trying to put a push on making Nacogdoches a place for tourists between the age for adult couples, so between the age of thirty-three and fifty-three. They're trying to increase the footprint by about twenty-seven percent by next year. So with that, and then building the Ferengi Hotel, et cetera, that's appealing to these people that are no longer, that are not college students. And they're, um, haven't necessarily talked, spoken to the residents of Nacogdoches with these plans yet. How is, if you were, if you were, if we weren't talking to you, et cetera? And you, you both keep talking about how we want college students to stay and feel more at home while we're here. Well, how would you combat that in terms of bringing in more, I don't wanna say elder, I don't wanna say older people, but I mean, bringing in older people while at the same time, yet we still have to appease the people that actually, actually live here, while also trying to appease us? But at the end of the day, in terms of the tourism, it's a money game. So how, how are you gonna combat that?
Well, first of all, Nacogdoches is not a retirees town. It's a town for all of us, regardless of the background, or our age, or demographic. It's all of our town, and it needs to represent all of us. I don't really like our community being, you know, pigeonholed by leaders as this or that. Tourism is very important, but it is my opinion that an economy is fueled by young workers. You know, service and retail, you know, restaurants, things like that, is all college days to about thirty of, that are, that are fueling the economy. So our economy has to work for y'all first and foremost. Uh, but as county commissioner, I would work to put focus on more of the progressive ideals that you and I both find important and stress that, you know, we can't allow our community to be labeled as a retirees town and only, you know, focus on the needs of elderly people. Because elderly people are not gonna be the ones that are fueling the economy. We have to make sure that young people have the jobs that they need and then places to go and send that harder money to help fuel the economy and keep things going. So, I think if I were to be elected county commissioner, there would be, at least from my point of view, and hopefully I can help share my point of view with my colleagues, a, a change of emphasis. Where, you know, while the elderly folks and older folks' opinions are very important, we have to give younger people's opinions and considerations just as much weight. And that's not something that's happened in fact, it was just a sound event here, as far as I can tell.
I think you have to attract all different ages. You attract tourists, because those folks come in, your restaurants, your hotels, gas stations, shops downtown, wherever, and they spend money. The local businesses make money, we get sales tax money, which is very important. Retirees, that's a good market. They come in, they buy homes. They buy homes, a lot of them have RVs. Those things still, they buy RVs here, they travel. Anything that brings money to the local economy has to be addressed. And the college market is, is hopefully always gonna be there. If college market dries up, this place closes, we're gonna look worse than that out of, out of three, four, three. And if anybody's from that, I, I don't mean that as a poor shot, I'm just saying, uh, it's not gonna be a ghost town, but. Also, we've got a good medical program. That draws in a lot of folks. So, we have a lot of pockets that we need to focus on and do what we can to make sure that they all get attention and that, that they all have people to feed off of. I don't think one or the other, uh, of course, if they're more of college students, yes. But it's a, it's a, it's a special market. You're gonna go wherever you wanna go, regardless. And, uh, you know, folks can attract you however they need to do it. But I mean, that's all a marketing issue, but, um, I think we need to make sure that Nacogdoches is appealing everybody and anybody that wants to come here. So, that, that's my question.
And, uh, young lady in the back, go ahead.
Um, so, obviously, all of the things that I want to work on, uh, and maybe local businesses, etc. But, uh, I mean, the median income, or how we, thirty-nine thousand, and ten thousand dollars is below the common one, and one of the people that are in the population, there is a, so. What are you gonna do, like, to encourage people to start a business here? If you don't have money, will you try and allocate funds to friends? Will you try and lobby people? Money, if you could, city, how many funds would start helping? I mean, if people, there is, this is without the help.
That's a good question.
Uh, well, that's, you know, something that I'm very excited about. And with, you know, a focus on local, some of our current signatures for economic development as we do it now would be focused more on, but beyond that, I would like to institute, uh, you know, a pathway between those types of people that are wanting to, you know, step out on their own and open a business, entrepreneurs, and local investors. You know, you're talking about, uh, the median income in our county. There's a lot of folks that are doing way better than that and have investments all over this country. But no one has given them a way to invest locally. They haven't made an easy exchange where local investors and local entrepreneurs can come together and make those kinds of decisions and move forward. And there have been some changes made through the SEC where, uh, you were previously only allowed to donate a very small sum to an unaccredited business, and the SEC actually raised that to ten thousand dollars. Now, if a local entrepreneur had a solid game plan and local investors were willing to get involved, someone could raise a significant amount of money for a business, you know, fairly quickly. And that would do nothing but support our local economy. Uh, that's something that I would like to work on, and I am no economics expert, but there are examples around the country, around the world, where things like this have been instituted to great success, and I would be, uh, leaning on those examples moving forward for Nacogdoches.
Senator Stark, go ahead.
Uh, when you mentioned that about local investors, uh, an excellent sample of local investors. Richie DeWitt, who owns Clear Springs Antipodes, bought the hotel. Made a tremendous reinvestment into opening that hotel and making it a thriving business once again. So, so there are cases where, uh, you know, people do reinvest locally. Now, one issue, you're talking about, uh, some of the local, uh, some of the incomes. One of the first things that investors, businesses coming in, what they look at is, do you have a good workforce in place? Do you have people that we can hire and put to work? Unfortunately, Nacogdoches does not have a really good pool of people to choose from. This would be where if recruitment from SFA, and they have job fairs all the time. So, so there are opportunities out there. Unfortunately, a bottom goes someplace else. But I think we also need to do something to shore up our local, say, little workforce. We need to bring them up to speed and, and that, uh, that, that's something I think we really need to work at. Because if you don't have people that you can hire and you have to bring in people to work, that's not a plus for any business, for any unit, so.
Oh, you, you, you're fine, you're fine. All right, I'm, I'm gonna try to close it up with one last question and, um. Alec, or you got a question?
If you can put me on our list, I don't want to be the last one.
But it has to be like a, depending on how loaded the question is, a minute of peace, a minute of peace.
Real quick, a couple of years ago, the town of Denton decided they were fed up with having fracking within their city limits. They thought it was killing them, and they voted democratically to end it. The railroad commission scoffed at that, almost immediately said, ha, 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 that's not gonna happen. To hell with your local determination. And the state of Texas passed HB forty confirming it. So however powerful your office was before, it's a lot weaker now. The state basically said, we can't control our stuff. Now, I've heard some of you talk about, you know, what the state lets us do. Well, you know, a hundred and fifty years ago, the state let us own other people. So we shouldn't use that as a really good standard, right? So, what I'm saying is, right now, we have a situation where the state of Texas has told us that we have a tin democracy, that when it comes to serious threats, we can't do anything about it. So, I would like some leadership that basically says, no, that's not acceptable. The state of Texas, particularly when they're listening to the fossil fuel lobbies, which does not give a damn about our future, when the state is listening to them and passing laws based on their interest and not the interest of everybody else. I would like leadership to stand up and say, this is wrong. And I don't wanna hear about what the state lets you do. Okay, I wanna hear about leadership. So, that's my question to both.
I can, uh, uh, Laura Crownover was the state representative over Denton. Uh, she was very instrumental in getting that law passed. Uh, Travis Clardy, our own state representative, uh, he made some moves to ensure that that bill was passed into law. The leadership in our state and, you know, across the country doesn't represent the interests of the people as much as it should, and these corporate entities, these, you know, fossil fuel industry and whatnot, they've got these folks in their pocket. So the only thing I can say is to stay active, get out there and support groups fighting against, uh, these environmental criminals, and, you know, we know your state representatives, call them out on their BS and hold them accountable. And to that end, if they are making moves like that and taking away responsibilities that do belong at the local level, uh, vote them out. You gotta get rid of them, you need representatives.
All right, you did it right on the mark.
Well, I was gonna say, first of all, why would they allow fracking in the city limits again?
Because they can't, they can't prevent it.
I mean, that's, that's where it went wrong from the beginning.
They were overridden by the state. They weren't allowed by the state to control the borders of their town. The state says, and this HB forty basically says, you cannot regulate any energy activity underneath your soil. Only the state can. And we know who the state listens to. Okay, so that means that effectively, we have no representation unless our leaders stand up and call the state on its bullshit. And so I'm asking you, are you prepared to call the state on its bullshit?
Inside the city limits, yeah, I'd raise hell about it. You better believe it or it's.
Well, you'd get nowhere with the state right now, they've taken that away from you. You haven't that power.
They can only be reinforced.
That's what I want to hear.
In closing, uh, thirty-second piece, I, I, I would like to ask each candidate, cause this is an election, and we still gotta make a decision, okay? Uh, so, you know, y'all are both amazing. We love both of you, we'd love to have both of you back, but we're gonna vote for one, so.
Well, no, half can vote for the young guy, half will vote for the old guy.
Okay, well, I, I, I would like, I, I, I would like to ask this. What gives you the edge over your opponent and why should you have the job more sold than your opponent? Thirty seconds, thirty seconds.
Well, first of all, like many of you, I support many important issues for marriage equality, women's rights, environmental protection, marijuana reform, and my focus on economic development will benefit the youth in our community, the young people in our community, and will help us.
the young people in our community, and will help us build a community that will welcome the students here at SFA with open arms and give them every advantage they need to, you know, grow and become professionals that y'all graduate as, and hopefully convince you to stay and help us build an even better community for the next generation. Uh, the edge that I have is a drive to make change. I want to be that change that we are.
I have been where y'all are. I have wanted to see Nacogdoches better. I've invested thirty, uh, thirty-six years of my life serving, committed, and in leadership positions. And because I wanted to see this place better. And I would like to see y'all, a few years down the line, be up here. Because you decided to stay here, and because there were opportunities for you that you could make a living here, raise a family, and see your dreams met. So, we're not far apart. It's just I'm a few years ahead of you. So, that's basically, that's it.
Seriously about to conclude, but I would wanna end it with a word of prayer. All heads bow. Dear me fatherly...